Good afternoon, everyone. Now convening the House Committee on Higher Education. Today is Wednesday, March 19th. It is 2:03 PM. Members, we have one agenda item today, SB 657, SD 1, HD 1. We received this bill from the Water and Land Committee relating to the Center for Climate Resilient Development. This bill appropriates funds for SOIST within UH Manoa to establish and operate a Center for Climate Resilient Development, effective 7/1/3000. Up first testifying in support, we have the UH system.
Aloha Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Amato, and members of the House Committee on Higher Education. My name is Colin Lee. I'm here to testify in strong support of Senate Bill 657. The Director of our research group, Dr. Chip Fletcher, could not attend today's hearing due to a longstanding conflict, but I'm joined here today by several members of our research group who are local climate scientists, researchers, and graduate students whose entire job is to model sea level rise and climate change impacts which ultimately go to support the resilience of our local communities and resilience of our local infrastructure. You have our written testimony, so I won't belabor all those points, but our modeling projections and research and data are used in a variety of state and local regulatory mechanisms for planning and policy decisions. Our research is entirely reliant right now on federal funding, which as I'm sure you lawmakers well know, is on tenuous grounds as the new administration continues to stop funding climate research and even try to claw back some of the money already allocated. Our research abides by the principles of climate resilient development, which formally means that we make it a point to work with underserved communities to develop an equitable approach to resilience planning for all of our local communities. We also collaborate and maintain working partnerships with state and local agencies, departments, offices, and individual lawmakers, and we sincerely appreciate your House Committee on Higher Education taking the time to consider this measure and are available for any questions that you may have. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you for coming on to testify. Up next, DLNR, also in support.
Thank you Chair. Committee members, Michael Kane on behalf of DLNR. We also stand in strong support. We are one of those departments that Colin mentioned that relies heavily on the research out of this center for informing our policies and our decisions and also where we invest our limited funds. We don't have any role models on how to deal with climate change or sea level rise. We go to conferences thinking we'll learn from other states and the other states are looking at us. We're actually ahead of a lot of them or most of them. So we think it makes sense to have the center be locally controlled and locally funded since we are in the forefront of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? If not, we'll switch over to Zoom. Is Emma Hyden Raycon? Not present, thank you. She had testified, submitted testimony in support. What about Dr. Keone Dudley? Is present?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Dudley.
Okay. I just, I have submitted testimony and I am in very strong support of this bill. I think that with what's happening in Washington, this is going to be all the more important. And I very, very strongly ask you to get behind this move and to support this bill. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Senate Bill 657, HD 1.
I have a question.
Yes, Rep. Keela.
I understand the importance of these kind of measures. I'm just trying to, so I chaired the Transportation Committee and a lot of our messaging has had to change within the state DOT to just conform with what federal folks are, I mean, we just have to get creative, right? So it's no longer sea level rise and climate change, it's fortification and protecting land resources in the state, knowing that we kind of serve as this military hub for the feds. I'm not saying I'm supportive or against that, but I'm just curious, as you navigate this space the same way as we are, are there talks of doing this work without flagging? I mean, knowing what the feds are axing in that? Does that make sense?
I believe I understand the question, which is how do we continue this research without triggering some of these federal buzzwords? I do believe that there are a variety of conversations that we have internally and with folks. You know, the reality is, these climate impacts on the ground take the form of things like the water table pushing up on buried infrastructure and continually having to improve water mains and electric lines where they're buried, et cetera. So these are, you know, these are understood as climate impacts in the realm of academics and science. Whether or not that is the driving monikers for those impacts, they do have day-to-day impacts on our communities. And, you know, whether or not we believe that they are caused by certain factors, the reality is that we have to address them or they will ultimately negatively impact our local communities.
So we're investing in studies to lower the cost of impact on taxpayers by protecting their infrastructure?
That, I agree, that's one way to frame it. If you're familiar with, say, the Hawaii Sea Level Rise Viewer, the data that underlies those projections was developed by some of the folks sitting in this room. And, you know, ultimately now those are, when you're considering a special management area permit or getting a shoreline setback or on Kauai, the Sea Level Rise Constraint District, these are things that our data is directly used to say how high up off the ground your base flood elevation is, if it's greater than FEMA's. It's also to ensure that we don't have too much development in the coastal zone and ensure that we protect public open spaces with the shoreline setback and view planes. And ultimately, you know, in the times of a storm, having your lowest elevated floor out of that projected flood zone will keep the folks in our community safe until emergency services and first responders can get there. And in addition, ensuring that these, you know, another example is ensuring that these shoreline setbacks have this good data to be able to rely on that project where the shoreline position will be and where high waves will impact will allow us to keep those folks safe from those similar high wave events. And, you know, it's also important to consider every individual type of climate change impact. I've spoken about a few that are primarily driven by sea level rise, but each individual impact, whether that be high waves, coastal erosion, passive flooding, groundwater table rise, they'll all have their individual adaptation strategies as well. You know, the way we prepare and respond to make a piece of infrastructure or a home more resilient to, a high wave would be different than how we would prepare it to be resilient to, say, coastal erosion, although those two are obviously connected. But I think that moving forward with this new administration, we do have to remain vigilant. All of these, many of these, much of this will now be solely in the state's purview to fund and to continue doing. And it ultimately will save the Department of Transportation money if, you know, if in the future we don't end up replacing the same bridge that goes out on Cam Highway three or four times or replacing and fixing a water main break, let alone not to mention, you know, how many folks will have to sit in traffic for those delays and all the lost income and...
No, thank you. I just wanted to definitely hear that you folks are amending to, I mean, this administration is not, well, hold on, let me walk that back. Administration always changes and it's going to happen. I just want to, we just respond accordingly, right? I don't want to lie or deny the work that we're doing. I just also want us to not have to be impeded by what's happening at the federal government to stop the amazing work that you folks are doing.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to definitely hear your folks' flexibility to that. And you answered the question greatly.
Thank you, Representative.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. You're welcome. Members, any other questions? Rep. Ebslin?
I have one more question for you guys. First off, thank you for all of you guys' incredible work. As you referenced, like Solorexa, the work you folks did through modeling has been a game changer for Kauai in developing, you know, the constrained district and guiding future land use policy. As an issue that we've seen again on Kauai was that we are having increasing very high intensity storm events, like the 2018 floods, which wiped out a, you know, shocking amount of infrastructure and housing on the North Shore of Kauai. Are you guys working on or have the capacity to do future modeling for those types of rain events that are not, you know, these thousand-year events that are not contemplated in the FEMA flood maps that could guide future land use decisions along the lines of Solorexa?
Yes, sir, we absolutely are. Researcher here with me today is actually, her primary focus is pluvial flooding or rainfall flooding. And we've recognized that this issue where FEMA 100-year design storms do not or happen much more often than 100 years and even more so. So that is definitely within the research that we're conducting. We've done a lot of this research for the primary urban core here on Oahu and are almost complete with it in the Koala Poco District on Oahu as well. And as I mentioned, you know, this research is, the folks in the room are doing this work and it can only continue if they have the time and resources to continue doing that research. As you all know, we do work closely with the Kauai County Planning Department as well. I know that they're pursuing some other grant funding and we've been in discussions with them to be a part of that, but I'm not sure how that's fared under the new administration. The short answer is yes and the long answer is it takes time to complete all of this.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Another question for you, please. Is this research being done for Maui as well?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, my district, South Maui, gets nailed with 100-year flood very frequently nowadays.
Yeah, sadly, that is the reality of some of these climate projections, which are based on static understandings of climate. And to be developed or used were based on historical data, which doesn't correlate to future impacts. And so the answer again is yes, we're working to continue this work on Maui and folks starting in communities that are, you know, have been devastatingly impacted like Lahaina and Conopali. One of my colleagues and I are literally, as of the last couple of weeks, have been working on a grant proposal to try and to focus on the Waimea Moku here on Oahu and the Four Moku on West Maui as well. But grant funding as it is, is competitive and hard to come by, let alone very uncertain moving forward. So yes.
I understand. Thank you. Please let me know. Reach out. Let me know how I may help support your efforts.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? If not, I just have one more, if you don't mind coming back up to the podium there. The bill is currently drafted, has a blank appropriation, but I believe in prior iterations, there was a $3 million line item. Have you folks broken out how that $3 million would be spent? Are we talking additional FTEs, consultants, whatnot?
No additional full-time equivalency. That's about our annual operating budget for the folks in this room, and we have a variety of other folks who are not able to attend today's hearing. So primarily, that's all just salary for climate modelers. No consultants contemplated in that budget.
So are you looking at this money to perhaps backfill federal cuts then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Seeing none. Members, I failed to mention the other testifiers we have on this, testimony we have on this measure. Testimony in support from the State Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, City and County of Honolulu Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency, the Ulupono Initiative, Surf Rider Foundation Hawaii Region, Climate Protectors Hawaii Coalition Earth, and the Climate Change and Health Working Group. So with that, members, we'll just go straight into decision-making. I think the clear need for this bill, considering as SOIST put in their testimony, the challenges with the federal environment and what federal grants might be available in areas like climate change. This bill already includes a defective date and a blank appropriation, but I definitely want to keep this moving along. So the Chair's recommendation on this bill is to pass it as is. Members, any discussion?
Thank you for answering the question, I think, regarding the salary. This really was to keep the office going and no matter what's happening at the federal level, I think this is just a lot of, we have to prepare for the worst situation. So I appreciate you moving this bill forward and I appreciate the work that the folks at University of Hawaii are doing on this matter and whatever ways you can support them.
Well said. Yes, Rep. Ebslin?
Yeah, I just want to add my support for this measure and the critical importance of the work that these folks are doing. You know, again, as he referenced, Kauai has used the modeling that they developed to create Sea Level Rise Constraint District, which requires higher free board based on future sea level rise modeling, which saves the public money in infrastructure costs in the future and it saves homeowners' money in ensuring that they're building a house, that this thing can be safe far into the future. And I know that County of Kauai especially has been really interested in trying to get some of this rainfall modeling done so we can do more of this work again to save all of us long into the future. And since Dr. Fletcher is not here, I can plagiarize something that he has said often, which is that we have built infrastructure for a climate that no longer exists. And a lot of our current setback requirements, and again, the FEMA flood maps are based on, you know, this sort of historical patterns, and we need this really granular modeling that you folks are doing. So strong support and appreciate all the work that you do.
Okay, well said. Members, any other discussion? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please, unamended.
All right, thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 657, HD 1. Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended. Chair and Vice Chair both vote aye. Representative Ebslin?
Aye.
Representative Capella?
Aye.
Representative Keela?
Aye.
Representative LaChica?
Aye.
Representative Olds is excused.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you come in. I apologize. Representative Sayama? He's excused. There we go. Representative Woodson, excused. Representative Maroka?
Reservations?
Noted. And Representative Souza?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. We are adjourned. Reconvening the House Committee on Higher Education for purposes of decision-making on the second item on our agenda for... on the second item on our agenda for decision-making only, SB 1252. Members, we did circulate a HD 1. This is a bill relating to dementia, requiring the UH border regions to establish a specialized training program to educate healthcare providers on methods to best care for patients having Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia, appropriates funds. As I discussed at the last hearing when we heard this bill, I have some concerns about the approach in terms of putting this program within the governance language of the border regions. So the HD 1, we did circulate earlier in the week, does adopt suggestions made from the Johnny Byrne School of Medicine. The version we circulated has a new preamble that, again, reaffirms the need for this type of training, noting that quite a few programs do exist, and jab some suggestion is that they could use a couple of positions to coordinate all the programs that are out there. So that is section one. Section two, we did leave a blank appropriation as well as the FTEs, but we include the amounts suggested as well as the FTE count in the committee report. And finally, a defective date of 7-1-3,000. Members, any discussion? Senate Bill 1252, SD 2. Seeing none, vice chair for the vote, please, HD 1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 1252, SD 2, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair both vote aye. Representative Ebsen.
Aye.
Representative Capella.
Aye.
Representative Keela.
Aye.
Representative La Chica.
Aye.
Representative Olds.
Aye.
Representative Sayama, excused. Representative Woodson, excused. Representative Maroka.
Aye.
Representative Souza.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay. Adjourned for real this time.